Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to a regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council being called to order at 6:00 PM. Today is August the 9th, 2022. Regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad. Absent. Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just want to make a quick announcement. The Councilman Hassan Ahmad, unfortunately, he's been sick for the last couple of weeks after his vacation. So, he's not been feeling well. Unfortunately, he's not able to join us. But I did speak with him. He's doing well, just his family's little... He's doing better, let's say. So, keep him in our prayers. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to have that led by Latanya.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Latanya Gator. Next up, we have Agenda Approval, item number three.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of August 9th, 2022, as submitted.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 26, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I could be mistaken. Did he say 4A or 4B?
4AA.
4A?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Mine says 4B.
That's the next one.
I'm so sorry.
No problem. This was the regular council meeting, and the next one's the special council meeting.
Okay. Sorry about that, Councilman.
No problem. Okay. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Baydoun. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up on the agenda is Item 4B.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of August 4th, 2022, as outlined in 4B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, before we go to public hearings and comments on agenda items only, Councilman Tom Wenzel asked me if he could have two minutes, two and a half minutes, and he wanted to make an announcement.
Thank you, Councilor.
First of all, I'd like to tip my hat to Ali Siah from Hype.
My one granddaughter is finishing up a basketball league there. What a class operation that is, and we're lucky to have a facility like that in Dearborn Heights.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, this is a little statement I thought I'd have to make. My family wanted me to make the same, but it says, "No one has been more passionate about the golf course and banquet center getting opened than me. From the start, I wanted this facility to be a venue for all, to honor and celebrate events such as Ramadan along with others like Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, Kwanzaa, Christmas, just to mention a few holidays observed in our community. A place where all cultures can celebrate and invite the community to enjoy and participate in their traditions." That's the phrase, culture neutral. Perhaps our Dearborn Heights City, Dearborn Heights Community Culture and Relations Commission could be based at Warren Valley. Be a good idea. I participate in many events sponsored by the city and various commissions such as the Dearborn Heights Community and Culture Relations Commission. I don't just show up, shake hands, and take advantage of some photo opportunities. I participate in all these events, all these events have to offer. It's not just me that shows up. I bring my entire family, which consists of our five orphaned grandchildren that my wife and I have adopted. We bring them to these events and many, many other community events throughout the city. I want our kids to experience the amazing diversity of our great city of Dearborn Heights. I don't see any other elected officials doing this on a regular basis, with the exception of our city clerk. My family and I have attended and participated in all June 19 celebrations sponsored by our Community and Culture Relations Commission. Even though it was very late at night, my entire family and I attended the first night of Ramadan at the Elite Sports Center to experience one of the traditions of our many cultures we have in the great city of Dearborn Heights. Every year in the spring and fall, I organize a creek cleanup and rain garden maintenance event. The largest number of participants, probably about 80%, are Arab-American young men and women. Throughout the years, we have established a mutual respect for each other, one that I hold dearly and close to my heart. With the help of a local artist, I designed a custom T-shirt every year for this event. To honor the young ladies who volunteer for this event, that probably wear their hajjab, I had artists illustrate the females wearing these hajjab. This is the T-shirt here, and this is the only female on there. She's got her hajjab on. Recently, I honored, I was honored by the Crestwood High School National Arts Society and made an honorary member of the National Arts Society. The students who spearheaded this were mostly African-American and Arab-American descent. This is the award they gave me. I've been accused of racism. That couldn't be further from the truth. If someone has some evidence other than accusations, please bring them to my attention. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Next up is Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items Only. I'm going to go ahead and go to Zoom first. Please state your name, city, and street. Looks like Barbara down there. Madam Clerk, can we let her on? You have two minutes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is regarding the tree ordinance. I hope you enjoyed the hot weather we had last week because the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration predicts even hotter and more erratic weather due to global warming, which is why it is concerning that the tree ordinance is being changed to make it easier to remove healthy trees. Not sure who you represent, as most people move to neighborhoods with natural areas as well as tree canopies. Removal of trees will decrease shade for homes and businesses, causing heat to be... creating an urban heat island, which puts our neighbors at risk of avoidable heat-related illnesses and deaths. There will be more air and water pollution as trees filter our air and water and help store harmful carbon emissions. There will be worse flooding because water is... be less habitat.
Wait, ma'am.
Yes?
After loose flooding, you got cut off. I'm sorry. We're working on our internet connection, so I apologize. After loose flooding, continue?
I said worse flooding.
Oh, okay.
Because water is absorbed by the roots of the trees. I sent you all this letter.
Yes, I got it.
Okay. Less habitat for owls and hawks that catch rodents, thus worsening the rat problem. There will be higher use and higher bills for air conditioning. In addition, there will be more noise as trees serve as natural sound barriers. Is this what we want for our city? I suggest you eliminate the ability to remove healthy city trees from this ordinance just because someone doesn't like them. It needs to be clear what consequences are for failing to comply with this ordinance. Are there civil or criminal charges? The current fine is ridiculously low. What if replacement trees are not planted? What if they die? The required size of a replacement tree will take a long time to equal the benefit of a healthy removed tree. Like the song says, "You don't know what you got till it's gone." Please reconsider and do not allow removal of healthy city trees, and clarify and increase the consequences of non-adherence to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. Appreciate it. Next up is Leslie Windlass, and Leslie asked to have an extra minute, so she will have an extra minute. Go ahead, Leslie.
Extra minute?
Yes, please.
Wait, hold on one second. I just wanted you to know that the extra minute was for my public comment at the end.
Okay. No problem. Go ahead.
Leslie Windlass, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights. I just wanted to comment on Agenda Item Number 9A for the CDBG action plan. I wanted to give kudos to Director Jamal. I'm assuming he took the lead on this. I came to one of the earlier hearings and asked for them to have a separate hearing with the documentation translated into different languages and on the south end of the city, and he did all of those things, so I just wanted to give him kudos and stuff.
Good job. Thank you, Leslie. We all sat? I'll make sure. Leslie, were you all sat? Okay. She gave us thumbs up. Okay, good. Anybody else on Zoom, Madam Clerk? Okay. Hearing none. Any audience, anybody who would like to speak on Agenda Items Only? And this will be two minutes. Seeing no one. One, two, three. All right. We'll go to the next item on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims 6-1 through 6-70 as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussions on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item 7A, Consideration of Bid, City Engineer Dib.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award a bid of the citywide water meter conversion oversight project to Hennessy Engineers for the amount not to exceed $102,960 as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Any discussion on that? I'd just like to make a quick statement, just for those in the audience or on Zoom. Actually, you know what? Since I spoke with Mr. Dib, but it's probably much better to hear. He's much smarter than I am. If you could just do me a favor, just for the audience, so at least they're aware, and the reason I want you to do this is, this is pertaining to the water meters, and this is the next phase taking us, getting us closer to installing the new water meters. So, if you could give them... This was put together in the engineer's way, so it was all engineer talk, and I called him and talked to him like two people at a bar. So, explain it that way, please.
Thank you, sir. So, this project consists, as we all know, that first, this is a bond-funded project that we identified years ago in the city that our water meters are outdated, are outdated, and they're not smart meters. There are accuracy issues, all kinds of stuff, maintenance issues. In fact, the biggest issue is availability. They don't make them anymore, and parts and things, you know, hard to find. So, the project was funded by bonds, and then the, what we have done so far is the staff identified the technology that we're interested in, what kind of technology. We were moving into the smart meter technology. So, we've identified what we want the system to do, and the next phase, obviously, is to implement the transfer. So, we have to put an infrastructure in place, so the system will be, again, a smart meter technology, meaning that we have the ability to read remotely. We have to install infrastructure in place, collectors, antennas, and read the system remotely and in person. So, we will have our people read remotely, drive-bys, and remotely. So, the idea is that the smart meters will be able to collect data 24/7 and report issues, stopping, you know, major leaks if you have a toilet running continuously. It should help our citizen and our city.
I think you mentioned there'll be an app, too, that residents can use.
Ultimately, yes. So, you can monitor 24... In fact, the best part of that technology is the ability to track waste. So, we currently have waste that goes on track because, you know, we have to wait to see the bill two months later to figure out, you know, if we have issues. Well, the meters will be able to track that. You can define parameters and the head end, so in the office, you can define what it is you want it to do. So, if you wanted to send an alarm to the head end, if it detects unusual flow of hours, things of that nature, or if you are, your average is X, and then you, all of a sudden, now you've got, you know, a swimming pool in your backyard, or major flow in the winter, that's a detection. So, they can be reported immediately, not wait till you have your bill two months later. So, that's the technology we're headed towards. We interviewed suppliers that provide that kind of meter technology, and now we're moving into the implementation phase. So, there will be a, we put out a public request for proposal, identified what it is that we wanted the consultant to provide, and we received, you know, good, I believe we had a couple bids, but some are real good bidders. They've done the exact same conversion to a sister city in Taylor, Michigan, a few years back, and it was a successful transition. So, obviously, you have 38,000 meters. You don't just replace them overnight. You have the defined areas that you need to work in, make sure the transfer in those areas have the ability to read, so you want it to be able to read that. So, it's a good project. We believe it's going to benefit our taxpayers and the city alike.
And I know you've done a lot of work on this, and I thank you, and good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any discussions? Any other discussions?
The Director?
Wait.
Director?
Got a question.
Councilman Wenzel has a question for you.
When this was originally proposed, I don't remember any talk by, you know, I guess it has to be about these antennas. How many antennas do you expect there were?
Depending on the technology you decide on. So, if the meters we select, and by the way, we're still going through the selection process on the meter itself. Some of, if you go like RF technology, then you need less antennas. You know, RF technology versus cell. If you need cell, then you can use existing cell towers. So, you have to decide on the technology. And the meters, we're still talking to suppliers now. If we do, I'm leaning towards radio frequency RF antennas, and we own two to three max.
Has there been any studies about the safety of RF?
Yeah. We use it. Everybody's using it.
Do they? I mean, there's...
It's a proven technology. It's not, nothing new.
Where else do they use that kind of technology? What applications?
The DT, he's been using them for years.
Around here anywhere?
Yeah.
For what, for what application?
Smart meters.
Oh, smart meters? Oh, the other cities have been using that, and they all use RF?
Mostly RF. Few of them are using cell towers, but that is, the cell towers are proving to be expensive because you have to pay for those, and there, in some areas, the coverage is not as good. Now, we have to keep in mind, though, that when, if we decide to go with an RF bandwidth, it will be, you know, identified and licensed. So, it's not just a arbitrarily frequency that we select. It'll just be dedicated frequency selected only for this, for this project.
Is all that put into this, into these packets? Okay, I didn't remember seeing that.
No, this is, this is the oversight. This is the company that will provide the oversight for the implementation. So, the next phase, so the part, the first assignment they will get from us is the, we will assign the technology or the meter selection, and then we will work with the meter suppliers to figure out where and when and how many antennas. We're not expecting more than three.
Oh, really?
Not more than three. So, we've looked at the radiant, you know, the coverage area, and then put it overlaid it, I did it actually, over the map of Dearborn Heights to scale. Two to three is max. It's all we need.
So, we won't have any other interference from any other cities in this thing?
No. Separate band. Separate, and Taylor, so Dearborn and Taylor have done that the last few years, and I talked to both of them. Dearborn has, it was a different meter they used, but the same technology, but they're still utilizing drive-bys as opposed to read meters, so they drive by, and then they can pick up that signal. We will have that ability. We will have both, the ability this way and the technology. So, we wanted to make a jump to the 21st century. Since we haven't done that since the 50s, our meters are very old. So, we want to make sure that we have the ability to detect and gain, so...
All right, thank you. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director.
Yes, sir.
So, motion 7A by City Engineer Dib, made by Muscat, Councilman Muscat, and supported by Councilman Baydoun. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item 8A. This is under Reports from Mayor. Item 8A, American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the communication from the mayor regarding the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, SLFRF. The second portion of the SLFRF in the amount of $12,157,231.50 was deposited into a designated ARP bank account on July 21st, 2022. The city of Dearborn Heights has now received a total of SLFRF allocation in the amount of $24,314,463 as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Coniston, supported by Councilman Muscat. This is, I'm not sure if this is the mayor or the chief of staff can answer this. I don't know who's worked on this. It's just a curiosity thing. With the funds that we received, and I went through the different Michigan cities that received different funds, at least from looking at the numbers, there doesn't seem to be a very clear rhyme or reason on how much different cities received. Like, for example, and I'm just curious, I know you weren't the decision-maker on this, but, and we got a pretty good amount, 24 million total, but you look at cities like, for example, Lincoln Park, which I know is smaller than us, and they received like, you know, 20 million, 90 million something. I'm just, do you know the formula they used in general? Or was it just based on residents, number of residents?
It's a combination of different things, that actually, federal government had had something, you know, formula, and that's what the numbers that they came up with. I mean, there's some cities, neighboring city, they got, you know, 5 million, some didn't get any.
Really?
Yeah, there's a lot of factors with it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay, any other discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I was wondering if our treasurer wanted to chime in and give us any information she might have on this at all. Do you have anything, any comment or opinion on this?
What, on what?
Well, I will answer the question, the question. As already outlined, when those funds come in, they're deposited into a restricted account. It is only for those funds. And then, once our office audited that account, which, or reconciled, which we do on a quarterly, excuse me, monthly basis, 45 days, we did notify, within a week of noting that the funds were in the account, we notified the administration and provided the backup that you have, and as, as the mayor had indicated, is the second payment. So, that is, that's what we're receiving.
Okay, this is a restricted account?
It is.
Yeah, there are silos or areas that are authorized for spending the funds in.
So, how much of the 24 million has been spent?
2.2 million that the council approved.
What was it for?
And that was for general fund.
We approved it.
Yeah, I said, I did say that. Council approved it, and that 2.2 million was approved by the council for general fund. Per the U.S. Treasury Final Statement, Final Letter, the council body, working with, I would encourage working with the administration, could go up to 10 million for general fund. So, that's for lost revenue. But again, the council body has already approved a budget that was proposed to you by the administration, so you've already accounted for those funds, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was the one, Councilman, if you remember, during the budget hearings, we had our former controller, David Sapuda, if you remember, he talked to us about it, and he had the graph, and we were short 2.2 million, and that was added in there. Okay. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat.
Nope.
I'm sorry, by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up on the agenda is Item 8B, Annual St. Linus Festival Bike and Blade Parade.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to St. Linus Catholic Church to hold their annual St. Linus Festival Bike and Blade Parade on Friday, September 9th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Police Chief Hart and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route and will provide any service they may require as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Okay. You guys did it together here. Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
This is a great event. My nephews and nieces go to every year. I know I've seen many of my colleagues there. Thank you to our police chief and our fire chief for providing those services. Thank you.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Baydoun, Councilman Baydoun, seconded by Councilman Coniston. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item 9A. It's from CEDD Director Jamal.
You've got to ask for it.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilwoman Nancy Brier, go ahead.
All right. I make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the PY 2022-2023 CDBG Action Plan, known as AP, and authorize the mayor to sign the SF424, SF424D, and the other required certifications as attached to the AP. In addition, authorize the controller to amend the city general ledger GL line items for Fund 103, Account 960, Community and Economic Development Department, CEDD, according to the U.S. Treasury/HUD/GH Integrated Dispersment and Information System, IDIS records. Furthermore, authorize the CEDD director to expend the DH/CDBG funding according to the IDIS record and to approve the IDIS drawdown vouchers to pay back the city general fund according to applicable rules and regulations. Also, authorize the mayor and the controller or clerk to approve the necessary warrants and the treasury to issue payment amounts not to exceed the balances of Fund, excuse me, 103-Account 960 budgetary line items according to City Charter, Chapter 8, Section 8.9, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Brier, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Item 8B from Chief of Staff Hernandez, Michigan Municipal... I'm sorry, 9B. Stop with that, 9B. Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, Property and Liability Coverage E Proposal.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and accept the renewal proposal Q000013513 of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, Property and Liability Coverage E Proposal for the period 7/1/2022 through 7/1/2023, and authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to physically sign or electronically sign as may be appropriate the proposed on behalf of the city. Additionally, approve the payment of $1,510,447 to MMRMA for the city's annual contributions stemming from the city's approval and acceptance of this proposal. Moreover, provide the mayor also authorizes any such payments as necessary expense. The city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payments of amounts toward the city annual contributions, which the total amount of these payments not to exceed one million, five-hundred-and-ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by city council, specific warrants and payment as permitted and consistent with the City Charter, Section eight point nine. Furthermore, with respect to the net asset distribution options, the city chooses to deposit its bank account, one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars in the form of an electronic fund transfer. Authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to complete the net asset distribut, distribution option form accordingly, and authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to sign this form electronically or otherwise on behalf of the city as a city member representative as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat. You need a break on this.
Yeah, I gotta take a break now.
Should we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Chief of, yes, Councilman. Oh, but that was a long motion there, and there's all kinds of stuff in there. Once again, I mean, anything that's that expensive, that mentions that much money, you know, I'd like to get our treasurer, I mean, she handles the money. Does she have anything to say on this at all, or nothing at all? Okay. I just, okay, I just, okay, I just wanted to make sure that everything is good with you.
Council Chair. Yes, Councilman.
Councilman, this is our insurance that we do, MMRMA, and we do this every year, I think.
Is that going, is that an increase, or is it about the same, or how's that?
Did you read it?
How's that?
Did you read it?
Is that a one-time, excuse me?
Did you read it, Councilman?
Yeah. Did it say that's, this is the exact same thing we paid last year?
Oh, there you go, Mayor. Okay.
It's a slight increase.
Yeah.
It always increases just a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
It is not a one-time payment. If you read the contract, it is typically paid in three installments.
Okay.
The first one is fifty percent, and then twenty-five percent more later on in like three months, and then twenty-five percent again.
Would it be to our advantage to pay it all at once, or is it higher if you pay it in payments?
It's up to you.
Would it be cheaper to pay?
It's not necessary, the contract specifies when you're supposed to pay it. It's not cheaper to pay it all at once.
Okay, Chief of Staff, two quick questions for you. Number one is on pay, well, it's not numbered a page, but on the first, second, third, the fourth page, and it's not numbered, but it's under renewal for property and liability coverage. I want to get a little better understanding in regards to the retention fund allocation of two-hundred-thousand dollars. What exactly is that?
Sorry, what page is it again?
It's the fourth page, including the first page, so this page right here. Renewal, the second page is the batch of it. Renewal for property and liability coverage. The question I had is, there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar amount, which brings it to one-point-five-one-zero million. It's called retention fund allocation. Can I get a little description as far as what exactly that is?
So a retention fund is the amount of money that is held within MMRMA in order to pay for any claims that the city receives. So instead of us paying checks every time we receive a claim, MMRMA settles those claims for us, of course, after approval from the council when we go to.
Up to two-hundred-thousand dollars. Okay. And the second question I had, I noticed that the contract begins.
Not up to two-hundred-thousand dollars. Each claim is different, and it is typically presented to council members.
No, no, but I'm saying, no, 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 I'm saying the retention fund allocation is up like two-hundred-thousand dollars. That's the amount that's on there.
No. Throughout the years, we've had bigger banks than that. The minimum amount that you can have is ten percent of.
So what does a two-hundred-thousand represent then?
It's that ten percent, but we have more than that in our fund allocation.
Okay. And the second question I had is, I noticed the contract begins on July the first. It's backdated. Is there, A, any consequence from that? Was there a reason behind it? I'm just wondering why.
I don't know why. It has always been that way since I started here. This year, we're actually two weeks earlier than last week with approving this. It's simply a matter of when they give us the questionnaire and when the city fills it out and has enough time to put it through council.
But no negative consequences from the fact we're starting late?
No, no. So our prior years, insurance carries through a few days until this is approved again.
Okay, no problem.
Council Chair.
Thank you very much.
It may be based also, it's an experience-based type of thing, so we don't know what the full experience is for the new premium period.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
And also, Council Chair, every year, there's new, there's changes, and, I mean, like, one year, they decided, okay, so even canopies, like outside, like structure, you have to insure. So there's a lot of things, like vehicles, you know, any vehicle you lose, then you gotta bring in another vehicle. So there's a lot of changes, and also, what was the biggest thing that they changed a few months ago?
This year, the biggest thing they changed was the amount that they would pay for any damage to a vehicle that's fifteen years or older. So in the past, it was capped at two-hundred-thousand dollars, but there are a lot of vehicles, especially in our police department, DPW Fire Department, that are valued at a much higher amount than two-hundred-thousand dollars. So they have now agreed that during the claim period, they will review what the actual value is, depending on how much you've invested in it, the materials that are in it, and they would come to an agreement on what the current value of that vehicle would be to settle that claim.
Good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So, motion by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine C. Well, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez again. Michigan Municipal League On-Site Program Agreement Parliamentary Procedure.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that to the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the Michigan Municipal League On-Site Program Agreement, and authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. In addition, approve the payment of one thousand, five hundred dollars to the Michigan Municipal League for the parliamentary program training that will take place on Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants and the treasury to issue payment from the GL Travel Educational One-O-One, One-O-One, Nine-Six-Zero, Point-Zero-Zero-Zero as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, this is a training that we feel that, you know, everybody should have, and we would like to have all the council members to be in that training, because we are ready, we're gonna pay for this after this gets approved, so for all council members to be present for this training, to run a more efficient meeting. And also, we gotta encourage some of the commission chairs to be present. I know La Tony and also Leslie requested to be in this kind of training, so.
There is a limit.
Yeah, there's a limit, so just let us know in advance, so we can let them know, because they're, they pay whoever attends, that we have to pay extra.
Sure. And I had an email sent out by our clerks, letting the council members, and I'm saying it here publicly again, this is mandatory, so please, 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 it's mandatory, but please be there.
Mandatory, is it?
Mandatory.
What are you talking?
You gotta be there. Okay. Any other discussions on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine D, City Engineer Dib, Studio B renovation final balancing change order.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Studio B renovation final balance, balancing change order in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars and fifty-nine cents to Barnett Construction Company Services of Michigan LLC. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants and the treasury to issue payment as outlined in nine D. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
I'd just like to let everyone know in the audience and at home that, I believe, this is Studio B we're in right now, right?
Right.
Okay, just let them know that this, this new council chambers is Studio B.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion on that? You want, come on up. And while the director is coming up, just, just want to remind you again, our internet connection, I know you're working on it, but specifically for people that are getting on Zoom, they're getting cut off, and.
Yeah, we're tracking this, but it's not equipment issue, it's more like internet service provider, ISP. That's, that's the link between us, so we're working on it.
Okay.
Who are you guys using?
No, it's mostly Zoom, that's the issue, Zoom.
It's on Zoom?
Yeah, Zoom is the issue.
Who do we use? Do we use Wow, or do we use?
No, we use.
No, I'm saying is, that's a Zoom issue.
It's a Zoom issue.
Director of Technology has me writing down when it freezes up so that he can track it. So, and we are hardwired in, so I don't really know.
Yeah, but still, you're linked to a system.
Right. But he is working on it.
Any, any discussions on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Hundred, hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar change order, is that correct, roughly?
No, seventeen.
No, seventeen thousand.
I thought it went from the original bid from.
Seventeen thousand.
From one, one million, five hundred to one million, six hundred.
No, no, we're on Studio B. That's the next, that's the next project.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's Studio B.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine E, City Engineer Dib, two thousand and twenty-one, water main improvement change order number one.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the two thousand and twenty-one Water Main Improvement Change Order number one for Ann Arbor Trail and Highland Avenue in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars to D and D Water and Sewer. In addition, approve the payment for the attached scope fee and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasury to issue payment in, in the amount not to exceed one million, six-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair, now.
Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Now, Director, just for the, because the people in the audience don't have this backup, can you tell us what the?
Okay, so we currently have, we currently have a project for one, one million, five-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars to replace water mains in that area. So in the area of Ann Arbor Trail, Highland Avenue, and as we are going through this project, we determined that seven additional crossings, the conditions of the pipes going under the pavement, were in such dire needs of replacement, and we can either ignore it now and hope that will work, or since we have the pavement open and, you know, the pipes exposed, replace the crossings now at today's prices, because we're noticing that water pipes are increasing in prices daily. So we can, the decision was made to recommend doing the crossings today while the pavement is down and the pipes are exposed, replace them now as opposed to wait and, and take a chance on seven crossings. So the pavement will have to be crossed and replaced seven times if we don't.
Can you explain to us what a crossing is?
So when you cross the pavement from one street to another, so going north of Ann Arbor Trail, that's a pavement crossing. In order to replace that section of the pipe, you'll have to open, cut the street and replace pavement, excavate, get to the pipe, and replace it. So normally, we base it on an expected life, a life expectancy of a pipe, but, you know, when you're doing, where would you stop? So we had a project, and when we exposed that, those sections, they were in not too good of a shape. So we figured we'll just, for now, we save the cost and don't take the chance on coming back in the winter and doing emergency repairs. Simple.
Smart thing to do.
Yep. Just.
Basically, spending pennies now to save dollars later.
It is ultimately our responsibility, so we're just, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director, good job.
Yes, sir.
So item nine E, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up on the agenda is item nine F. This is from Ordnance Enforcement Animal Control Director, Dishroom, purchase of fleet vehicle. Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the purchase of a two thousand and seventeen Ford F-150 that is remaining from the previous lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents to complete this transaction as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I, you know, I read this, you know, when I was going through this packet, I saw the emails exchanged between the director and the fleet management, and I believe Mariana jumped in on this, and they were able to execute this, so, you know, good job to everybody on this. Look, I know, you know, the men and women that work in this department, it's not an easy department, you know, and I know a lot of their equipment are really outdated, and anything we can do to continue to, you know, provide for them, I think it's something that we need to focus on. And I know I've had conversations with our director and some of the staff there with the animal control truck. I know it's expensive, that's something that we really need to consider, it's our animals, and it's, you know, it's the safety of our employees. So maybe down the line, we could figure out a way, or maybe we could reach out to some companies that will maybe even donate half. But that's just something we can keep in mind and let them know that we're gonna continue to fight for them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. So, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine G from Police Chief Hart, Transportation Improvement Association.
Council Chair.
Yes. Councilwoman, go ahead.
I'd like to move, make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the partnership with the Transportation Improvement Association, known as TIA. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrant and the treasury to issue payment of twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and ninety cents with eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents from Act Fifty-One Major Streets GL Account Two-O-Two, Two-O-Two, Eight-Nine-Five dot zero-zero-zero, Admin and Engineering, and eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents from Act Fifty-One Local Streets GL Account Two-O-Two, Two-O-Three, Eight-Nine-Five dot zero-zero-zero, Admin and Engineering, as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Thank you. Is our chief heard on?
Yes, he is.
I just had a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Wait, hold on, let him unmute. Go ahead.
There you go. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Hey, Chief, thank you.
Thank you, and just so you know, Jim Santilli, who is the CEO of TIA, and his Director of Engineering, Chuck Keller, are also with us on, on the Zoom call as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. Hello, Jim, how you guys doing? Chief, maybe it's to Jim or to yourself, maybe one of you guys can answer this. I just had a couple of questions. I think this is a great, it's a great program. The only question I have is, what is the turn time on this? My second question, I'll just ask you the questions, you guys can jot them down and you can just respond to them. My second question is, if somebody's to reach out regarding, say, from the city, can they reach directly to TIA, or do they have to go to the police department? Do they have to fill out a form? What are those necessary steps? And then, third, is there a dispute where, let's just say, you know, TIA said it's not necessary, but, you know, some of the residents continue to felt in such a way, could the, could the department make its own decision rather than following the guidelines of what TIA were to state?
I'll let Jim handle the one about lead time. They're generally pretty quick, once they collect the data. In regards to the process and who will reach out to them, we need to develop a policy and procedure moving forward. Mr. Dib and Chief of Staff Hernandez and I were discussing this, putting something on our website, like a button where someone wants to request some traffic. Review. Some process.
Chief?
Yes.
After putting together, I'm sorry, you got cut off. Please repeat that.
Okay. So we're working on a policy and procedure on how residents and/or council members can request stop signs or traffic control devices. So that way, there's no mystery to it. We put the information out to the public right away. And I believe your last question was, will we have the opportunity to weigh in or override recommendations from TIA? And it's been my history with TIA, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're here to.
Wait, Chief, you got cut off after they're here.
Okay. They're here to provide the data analysis and the recommendations to City Council. And they will share the dangers of going outside of those parameters, that the risk that the city may assume on that. Jim, did I cover that fairly well?
Yes, Chief, that's correct. Again, what we'll do is, and thank you, council members, for having us on today, but what we do typically is we'll get a request from the city, our engineering team will review the location with appropriate city employee, they'll look at the crash data, they'll do data collection on there, depending on what type of data needs to be collected, then they'll analyze all the data and put together a recommendation.
He's unmuted. Are you there, Jim?
You're muted, your mic isn't.
No, it's not his mic, I think it's on our end.
It's a Zoom. No, because you can hear everyone else on there. I can still hear the chief.
You're still?
Okay.
There you go.
After you said data, you got cut off, I apologize. So, can you finish what you were saying?
You hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, what we'll do is put together the report after we root the data, and then we'll send the report over to the appropriate city employee. If they need us to, we can attend a council meeting as well to go over what was done out there, answer any questions the citizens may have. And again. And then what, you know, requirements are, for instance, on the Michigan manual uniform traffic control devices. For instance, a stop sign just can't be put where you want to put it, or a speed limit just can't be set at a number that's desired. There are laws, regulations that have to be met.
Okay, so, you got one more question, go ahead.
Yeah. The last question was, yeah, just the turn time, because I know on one of the ones that you guys submitted was in May for the one for Councilman Ahmad, and our turn time, and I'm sure it's maybe because we were going through the contract we had just received, that I just want to know what was the turn time on that one, since that was our first that we actually did with you guys.
Chuck, can you maybe answer that question, since you worked on it? You're on view right now.
It doesn't have to be that specific. What do you guys usually have?
In general, what is the turnaround time from the time that?
I'm not, I'm not going to judge you on it, I promise. I'm excited for this program in general, I really am. It's something that's been much needed.
Typically, turn time, you know, it really depends. I mean, typically Chuck will receive the request, he'll talk to the appropriate city employee who made the request, and then usually within about a week or so, he'll get the data collector.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if it was going to be three, four months. That's what I, okay.
No, not really, no. The only times we do have delays are if traffic counts need to be conducted during the school, for instance. If it's obviously summertime, then we would delay that until the school goes back.
And I want you to know, you're probably going to receive a lot, because, well, one, I'm sure I have a lot on my list that I'm going to send over to the chief, but, and like I've said, I've had this conversation with this entire administration and this chief, and I'm sure many of us have said this, the city was built in the sixties, we put, you know, there were stop signs, and then there hasn't actually been a study across the entire city. So, there are streets where you can go forty, fifty miles per hour on because there's no other stop sign that's slowing anybody down.
Okay. Thank you. So, the questions I have, I'm not sure if it's the chief or Mr. Jim Santilli. Cost, you know, I always analyze a lot of things, at least in my business, cost versus benefit. So, is there a benefit to this? I believe in my heart of hearts, there's a benefit to this, obviously, and it would keep our men and women in the police department doing what they do best, and then let these guys do what they do best. My question or challenge has been cost versus benefit, because to the best of my knowledge, in general, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, you know, as far as I know, it's like, because the ones we vote, based on the ones that we vote on, it's four to seven to eight, maybe ten, twelve of them a year that we vote on, even twelve is, I think, a little liberal. Yeah, I think twelve is even a little liberal. So, the ones that come to us as a council to vote on after the police department does a study on them, off the top of my head, unofficial surveys, probably three to five of them. Would you say that's correct, Councilman? Yeah, three to five of them. So, with cost versus benefit, based on those numbers, and if we're asking for, let's use the, be up there with seven, be very liberal. If we're having seven of them done at a cost of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, it seems a little excessive. So, can somebody clarify that for me?
I will just let you know that this just isn't for the police department, that there's a benefit here to Mr. Dib in engineering. So, it looks like maybe the screen.
He's coming up, so maybe he can clarify that. Okay, good.
So, Mr. Dib is going to also be able to utilize TIA for traffic counts and other studies that need to be done for the economic growth that we're experiencing in the community.
Right.
So, I'll let him speak on that. I can't see the podium from Zoom here. Is Mr. Dib up there?
Yes, he is.
Yeah. So, Council Chair, as the chief indicated, the process we're trying to put together now is that not just the requests don't just go to the police department. We have studies that are part of building and engineering, that we process, you know, permits for. And then later, we find out that, you know, so I'm going to give you an example. In the short time that I've been with the city, the car wash studies, the mosque, the beach daily crossing, the Riverside School, and what I have on my list now that I need to use TIA for will be like the Ford John Daly Starbucks situation. I'm still, you know, we still need to do a study on the traffic because it's, you know, the distance.
But that would be all inclusive within the twenty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I know the studies.
Five to seven thousand currently per study.
Right, that's what I was going to say, because I know the studies you've done, you pay five or seven.
And so, this is just, not just for the police department for a stop sign in the neighborhood. This is more for the process that we put together for all of our traffic transportation needs. So, before you issue, like, we have a diesel lane on the Ford Plaza that's coming up, you know, situation, now no left turns. We have Gully Road, I mean, I can come up with a list of things that we need to do. Now, we can elect to do them individually and hire consultants to do those, or go through this, and I have.
A retainer.
Absolutely, a retainer.
I do know firsthand, I've spoken with one of the sergeants in the police department about the concern on Ford Road, so I see what you're talking about there. For example, on Ford Road, a lot of people turning left on the south side of Ford Road, so if they're going towards Garden City, it's starting to be problematic. So, I see where it's going to be done there. Okay.
Yeah, that's the.
But no, no, if it's including the stuff that you're doing, and I do know we usually pay five, seven thousand per.
Yes.
Per item, and I, you just mentioned three, four of them right there, so, okay. No problem.
Is there a cap on it? How many do we do?
I don't believe so, Chief. Is there a cap? I don't believe so, no.
There is not a cap that I'm aware of, and I did speak to Mr. Santilli yesterday. From Council Chair Protem had asked a question over the weekend regarding city streets. Mr. Santilli does have great relationships with MDOT and other road commissions throughout the region. They work together on many projects. So, you know, this, I really see this as a win-win. These are experts, these are trained, you know, and educated folks in the art and science of traffic engineering. We are not. We're really good at the enforcement piece and education.
Yeah, so this is part of our trying to move the city into the.
I'm sorry, did I cut off?
Sorry, Chief.
Yeah. So, you said the education, then you got cut off, Chief.
Really, you know, looking to partner around some educational opportunities too with TIA. They have some excellent traffic initiatives that they do that will be also able to benefit from.
Now, as I understand it, Chief, you've used them in the past in previous city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And you were comfortable, I hate to put you on the spot, but you were comfortable, obviously?
No, very comfortable. You know, our sheriff, Sheriff Washington is a part of TIA, and I believe on the advisory council. So, this isn't just an Oakland County thing or a Washtenaw County thing. This is a great regional program here, and I have full faith in Jim and his team.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Dib, do you know if, like, the equipment that they need to do these studies, is that they furnish all that equipment at no additional cost, no matter how much they need?
Yes, sir.
Now, how many, how many studies can they do at one time? Can they do, I mean?
Well, this is a very, this is a good-sized organization. I mean, I believe we're going to keep them busy, at least until we get to a point where we have a process in place. We are trying to move, you know, our standards in the city of all departments into more of, you know, higher standards, if you will. I'm not saying that, you know, we were, but we want to make sure that everything we do is all inclusive and it's by the book. So, my part is to make sure what engineering is doing, issuing permits is the same, is cohesive. So, the first thing we're going to do is come up with a master plan for the traffic, at least the traffic device. So, like we do, street lighting, we have a street lighting for the, a plan for the whole city now. So, we know what, you know, what units are available where and what coverage area we have. Same thing will go for the transportation part. So, anytime a change is taking place, we will examine what implication that change will have on the rest of the system. So, that's, that's the kind of, so we just don't, you know, put a request and say slap a stop sign, or no left, or no right. We, it's part of the system. We wanted to have that standard in place. So, when our people issue a construction permit, they're taking that into account. So, we can have that examined and say, okay, what is that going to do to my traffic flow? Speed limit, breaking distance, all the issues that, you know, traffic engineer will look for.
Are these studies going to benefit the, like, Wayne County and certain areas, like curb cuts on county roads, stuff like that?
Sure, and MDOT. So, I'm going to give you an example. So, the traffic study that you guys authorized about three months ago, like, for the, for the school, and we conducted that, the Riverside School Traffic, we have an exact solution for it. Now, that's going to be expensive, but that is going over a city road. However, because of the use, because you're dealing with schools and, we qualify for a large percentage grant. So, that grant requires me to use services like this to, in order to get eighty percent. So, it's a win-win situation. Either we can pay for it, or I can use, this is the data that I need to provide for, for the government agency to give me the money.
Awesome. Good deal.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
So, item nine G, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven A from Mayor Bazey's second reading of proposed ordinance H-22 dash oh three in Lawrence for the City of Dearborn Heights, providing that the code of ordinances, City of Dearborn Heights, be amended by amending section thirty-three dash twenty-nine concerning permits for tree planting, care, and removal, as well as section thirty-three dash thirty concerning tree protection be considered read for the second time and become effective upon publication as provided by law as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constan, supported by Councilman Bedun. Before I go to anything next, just give me a quick second. Counselor, I'm sorry, earlier, you want to say something? Do you want to?
No, that's on an item.
You all set?
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize.
I'll mention it to you after.
Okay, no problem. So, motion made by Councilman Constan, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussions on this?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
After going through this a few more times, I've had second thoughts on this myself. I would like to see something more like, you know, pinpointing certain trees to be removed, like the dirty ones, like the sycamore trees, trees, you know, larger, so large that they pose a danger to the residents, the streetways, and a concrete breaking up. Just to remove a tree just because you don't like a tree, or, you know, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this anymore. So, that's going to be my reasoning of my vote. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Chair?
Council Chair? Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I hope that, you know, the council doesn't ignore the environmental impact studies and the lack of, of identification of some of these trees, these, some on private property, some very large, I don't know if they call them heritage trees, or trees that are hundreds of years old. I think there should be more specific, and, I mean, to cut down a four-hundred-year oak tree just because you don't like it, I mean, then you'll be gone in ten years or something. I just can't, I've gone through this several times, and it needs to identify more, like Councilman Muscat said, you know, be more specific on some of these trees that they're allowed to cut down. We have to have some kind of regulation. So, that's why I'm going to be voting no on this. Just.
Council Chair?
I'd like to add and remind everybody that it would still, yes, I'm sorry, just, just one second. I'd just like to remind everybody that no matter which tree in this particular ordinance, it would still have to be sent through DPW, there would still be a permit pulled, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, I'd like to remind everybody, although I do understand the environmental concerns, I don't want us to vote on this like there's going to be four hundred trees per block taken down. I think if I were to estimate, maybe every two to three blocks, there may be one tree taken down. And I also, my personal belief is, if I'm in a home, and let's say I personally, on my house, don't want a shade in front of my house, okay? I mean, I don't want, I don't want a tree covering over my roof. I don't want a shade. I want a small eight-foot tree. Again, people will be putting a different tree, replacing the current tree in there. To me, a resident should have the right to do that, if that's what they so, if that's what they choose, versus they live in a home, and they've got a huge tree in front of them that's messing up their sidewalks, or maybe dropping leaves, or maybe dropping bark, or whatever it is, for whatever reason, they, they would like something nicer in front of their home. To me, I think residents should have a right to do that. And again, we shouldn't talk about this like there's going to be eight hundred trees replaced per block. I think if we had one of three a month, it'd probably be too much, but that's my opinion. Let me go with Gary, and then I'll go with Councilman Constan. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Council Chair, just per the direction of the council, I made the changes that were directed. The only, and my comments are not policy comments in terms of, you know, what should be done or not done, but I do want to note legally that there is the concern that I pointed out the last time, in terms of essentially doing the tree planting element with respect to this, that you're conditioning a permit upon someone doing that. That was part of the problem in the Canton Township situation. It's a little different, because this is not for a large development.
It is almost a forest.
But, but it's, this is a situation where someone is still essentially being given a right to remove trees, or to remove trees subject to the permit, but the permit, essentially, the Public Service Administrator, DPW Director, has no choice but to give them the permit, provided they meet the conditions. Like, it can be removed safely and so on and so forth, and the tree planting thing. And the tree planting thing, I still have to say again, is a concern.
Okay. And the tree would be removed at the owner's expense, and the new tree would be put in at the owner's expense?
Right. Plus, I put in some additional stuff about they would have to agree to indemnify and hold the city harmless. We could require to make sure that they have a licensed insured contractor. So, you know, I really tried to make sure that that was covered.
Correct.
Councilman Constan?
Thank you, Council Chair. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, this can be amended, but I've received over the years calls about trees, tree removal, dead tree, trees being trimmed, more than anything else. And the city can only do so much. And City Attorney Jeremy Yatki brings up a good point about the Canton Township case, and requirements that a landowner do certain things, you know, may or may not pass muster. But I, I think an update to our existing tree ordinance is long overdue.
Right. And the one in Canton was, I don't know how many acres, but I do remember it was a developer that took out all kinds of trees, and it was, again, I don't know how many acres, but I know it was a huge plot of land, full of trees, took them all down. It was not like a resident with one tree in front of their home. And I want to also point out that in addition to this, there's a situation with a lot of unhealthy trees throughout the city, which unfortunately, based on our budget, based on number of people in our DPW, and prioritizing, we can't take down. So, there are unhealthy, and sometimes even dead trees, sometimes even potentially dangerous trees, that are falling on people's cars, that we don't have enough manpower sometimes, or it's not the top or the highest priority, based on other things available to us that we have to work with. And residents end up being stuck with it, and they're waiting on a waiting list of one year, two years, and sometimes even three years with nothing happening. So, not as we'll give them, at least with where I would like it, the opportunity to be able to take that tree down. Go ahead.
And again, those are policy issues. That's not the issue. The issue, though, with Canton Township, again, I think there could be ways to try to distinguish it, but the underlying issue really was that the permit was conditioned upon tree plantings and replacement, and there was no individualized assessment done. Likewise, in our ordinance, the same argument could be made. So, the concern very well may carry over to this new ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Chair?
Councilman Bedun?
Thank you so much, Council Chair. And I want you to know that this, you know, unfortunately, you know, stemmed really through because of the current situation that the city is in. Like many of you guys over here, I can tell you, Councilman Muscat, Councilman Constan, Councilwoman Breyer, Councilman Tom Munzel, myself, and Council Chair, including the mayor and Marianna, Chief of Staff, every single one of us over here have received phone calls, or have walked out of our house, and somebody stopped them about the tree issue. It is, I'm looking at a young girl who is right in front of me. I was driving my car. True story. She's walking her dog, and she stopped me. I was on the way to a city council meeting, and she said, what are we going to do about my tree? I said, I don't know. I sent an email to every single one of you guys about screenshots, about residents that are literally bombarding my phone, and I don't know what to tell them because there's a three-year waiting list. Me personally, I don't want trees brought down. But I think, you know, there are, you know, several trees in the city that are bad, that are destroying people's lawns, that are destroying, you know, the sidewalks. There are people, I said, I got a photo from a friend of mine where his in-law fell straight onto the floor, her entire face was bruised up. I mean, she should have kept her eyes open, is what I really told her, and I'm sorry, but, you know, you see, I mean, the trip was huge. But, and she blamed the tree. I said, it's not the tree, it's actually the sidewalk that was coming up, but it was really the root that brought it through. It's a serious concern. Look, nobody here wants to see more flooding, or, you know, I love birds. I got an African gray at home. You know, I don't want to see the birds not have a resting place anymore. But it's very unfortunate that we don't have the manpower, we don't have the funding. I had this conversation with the mayor. He told me it would cost close to five million dollars to remove and trim all the dead trees in the city. We don't have five million dollars.
Well, the ones that are on the list, you mean?
Correct. Five million dollars. That's where we would be standing. But I want you to know, even if this is approved or not, every tree that's removed should be replaced. And I hope, you know, that that's enforced. And secondly, I hope that the city doesn't feel because this is put together that we're no longer going to trim trees. So, if the DPW Director's hearing this, I know you guys go above and So, if the DPW Director's hearing this, I know you guys go above and beyond, please don't stop trimming trees. And I would hope that the mayor would continue to make sure that they're going out there and they're still trimming out trees because they still need to be trimmed up.
And, and, and let's not forget, if this passes, if it becomes problematic in our city like anything else, this is not etched in stone. Then we'd have a new ordinance making the changes and tweaking it to a way that would be back to being okay. So, okay. Any other discussions on this?
Counselor Chair, that, that's.
Councilman, but.
Okay. The last couple of statements by Councilman Bedu and yourself, you're saying things of dangerous trees, that's, that language should be in here. I mean, that's when you can look at something and say, hey, this tree's dangerous, it's busted on my sidewalk, okay, you can remove it. I mean, not just anything general, you know, because.
I agree. And if you want to amend that and we can, yeah, I'm okay with that. Me personally, the tree in front of my house is not big enough. I, my, I'll tell you straight up, my DTE bill is up, but I don't, I don't have the same tree that my buddy, you know, my neighbor Bulldog has. He has a big tree and it gives him all the shade. I, I don't have it. I have a very small tree. I wish it would have been a bigger tree, but that's me, that's my preference.
Okay. Anything else? Would you guys, Councilmembers?
I think Mariana had her hand up.
Sorry, it was just in response to the comment of there should still be a rule as to what's a dangerous tree. We do have that. So, again, what the motion says is that it will be determined by one of our DPW staff members. And they're the only ones that get to determine when they're dangerous or not. So, it's not up to our legal counsel or yourself to determine that.
Counselor Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Usually I ask these questions via email or phone calls, but in my, i, i, is, you know, the ordinance, the way it is written, doesn't automatically mean someone wants to cut their tree down, they get it cut down. There has to be something wrong and a reason why they want it cut down. Just because they don't want it doesn't mean they get to cut it down.
If they're willing to pay for it and pay the relocation fee and it, it's a healthy tree, they can end up having it removed.
Thank you.
And the ordinance to where if a tree is unhealthy, if a tree's unhealthy, or if a tree's dangerous, if we're going in that direction, we already have that ordinance in place. And this is to change that ordinance to where if somebody, look, I got, I got a lady, for example, she's got three little kids, she's got a huge tree in front of her house, DPW went over there to take a look at it, it keeps growing under her sidewalk, kicks it up, she's got one handicapped child, and she could not take it out. And she was willing to take it out at her expense and put another tree in there. To me, that's what she wants for the safety of her kids. It's not on her quote-unquote property per se because it's an easement, but it's within her home's area, if you want to call it, not using legalese. To me, they should have a right to.
Yeah, and if, if I may, just Counselor Chair, just to distinguish, when it is a healthy tree, the require, and it's in the city right-of-way Boulevard, then the person can remove it. They still have to get the permit, but they're gonna be entitled to the permit provided they meet all of the other conditions, plus they end up paying for it and doing the relocation. If it is an unhealthy tree, then they would be able to get the permit provided they meet all the requirements, but they don't have to end up doing the relocation planting because obviously you're not replacing a, a living tree, you're replacing a dead tree. So, they don't have that obligation. That's really the, the only real distinction between.
Okay, so I want to clarify that. So, if it's a tree that's unhealthy.
And what's unhealthy?
And, well, no, that's where the DPW determines. So, they contact DPW, DPW sends one of their, their individuals and they look at it and they say, yes, it's an unhealthy tree. A resident may at that point, based on my understanding of it, may, of course, you know, and it, it get, the DPW person says, yeah, this is a bad tree, then it could be taken down at the city's expense and possibly replaced. It doesn't have to be the resident.
Right, but the, and, and if Mr. Conrad is on, he might be able to comment on this and correct this, but I believe this to be the case.
He is, he is on there.
They use, they use an arborist, a person who's trained in trees to make that determination. It's not just, you know, well, it looks unhealthy to me, you know.
Right, right, no, I'm familiar with that.
So, it's actually someone who's, who's educated in this, who makes that type of determination.
Correct, correct. Director Conrad, you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, you know, my staff, if they will go out and look at it and if they can determine, you know, on their knowledge that it, it's a good, healthy tree, they, they will make that determination. If they have question about it, then we do have the availability of Dearborn Tree and their arborists to, you know, help further evaluate the tree. So, yeah, we, yes, we do have the ability to, you know, seek the knowledge of certified arborists if, if we need it.
But if they make a determination that that tree's unhealthy after a resident contacts you guys and you have the arborist take a look at it and they determine that, yes, it's a unhealthy or possibly potentially dangerous tree, then at that point you would take it down. But the challenge has been with DPW, with all the different logistics of it, you're how many years behind right now as far as the number of trees that you have on your list?
Three years. We're, we're not that far behind on, on dead and dangerous trees. What we're far behind on is, is our trimming. So, you know, our, our trimming.
You got cut off af, wait, you got cut off after trim, you got cut off after trimming, so please repeat.
Okay. We're, we're really behind on our trimming in, you know, things that are like considered a priority two of five. You know, they tend to stay on the list a long time because the diseased and dying trees, which are number fours and fives, end up keeping them on the list longer than, you know, they should be. So, you know, it's not that, you know, the list isn't something that it's first on, you know, and then you, you work your way towards the front of the list. You, you know, you could notify us of a tree that is, you know, severely diseased and dying, you know, this week, and it could come down next month because it's gonna take a priority over, you know, a tree trimming. So, I mean, when people say they've been on the list for three years, it's probably because their tree trimming is, is, you know, at a number two level and, you know, it keeps them on the list that long. It's, you know, not because we don't have time to get to it. I guess we do, I guess you could say that, but I mean, we do prioritize our work and get the most dangerous stuff first.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Any other discussions on this? Hearing none. Item eleven A, just to repeat, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Bedu. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Diva Abdullah?
Yes.
Mul Bedu?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Constance?
Yes.
Gray Muscat?
No.
And Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion passes forty-two.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven B, Mayor Bazey's Resolution of the City Council of the City of Dearborn Heights Affirming Approval of the Senior Alliance two thousand twenty-three dash two thousand twenty-five Multi-Year Plan for Aging Services.
Is this not in file?
I'm sorry?
Is this a note?
Approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Chair.
Okay. Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution of the City Council of Dearborn Heights affirming approval of the Senior Allianz twenty-two thousand twenty-three twenty-two thousand twenty-five Multi-Year Plan for Aging Services as outlined in eight B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedu. Any discussion on this?
That would be a lot of that for me for the agent.
I, I, I do commend the administration for continuing to work with this particular organization and, and doing good things for the seniors, so good job. Any discussions on this? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven C, Corporation Council Miatki Resolution Proposing Amendment of the Dearborn Heights City Charter Regarding Warren. Councilman, please. Of Dearborn Heights City Charter Regarding Warren Valley Golf Course.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I recommend that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution proposing amendment of the Dearborn Heights City Charter to add a new section to be numbered eighteen-point-two-one. Approving ballot language, designating purpose and proposed amendment, providing publication as well as text for publication, and directing as well as authorizing the city clerk to take actions necessary to submit proposed amendment to electors as outlined in eleven C.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Wenzel. I just want to add one word in there that was missed, approving publication, just for the clerks. So, motion made by Councilman Wenzel, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
By approving this, does this stop the city in any engineering that may be necessary to alleviate flooding? And I'm asking this to our corporation council and to our engineer. By adopting this, does this really stop us from doing anything as far as that scope?
Counselor Chair, do you want me to answer?
But.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. You, you need to speak or you all set? Oh, okay. Okay, any other discussions on this?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constance. You need to speak?
Yeah, the, the one thing I would recommend in terms of an amendment to the motion is that it also reflects that the certification, paragraph be changed to Tuesday, August nine, two thousand twenty-two, in the language on page three, it's July twenty-sixth.
As far as what was the date?
Today's date.
Today's date instead of July the twenty-sixth.
In, in, in the actual.
Certification.
Yep. Okay. And discussion on this?
Councilman Constance. You need to speak. Go ahead, Mayor.
Real quick, I've gotten several calls from a few residents, actually, they mentioned if we actually do anything with this, we have to do on every city property. So, we'll be requesting for the, the city attorney to do the same if this passes on every city property that is leased.
So, this, you know, resolution proposal, personally, I'm against it, and the reason I am against it is this. Residents put people in elected office to make decisions on behalf of the residents. If we're gonna take everything back to the residents to vote on, then we would do something for this golf course, we would do something for the Eaton Center, we would do something for the Berwin Center, we would do something, something for the library, we would do something for City Hall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, to me, residents put people in office to make decisions on their behalf and then they go do what they do. Now, when they need their input to the elected officials as far as the voting is concerned, obviously they have access to their elected officials. Let's talk about Warren Valley specifically. Warren Valley right now, for those of you who had the opportunity to read it, from Revive Golf Management, I don't know who read it or not, but.
Different phases?
Revive Golf Management and the current concessionaire, once the, the contract's completely signed, they've got some plans for this particular golf course, and they've got some beautiful plans, some great detailed plans. As a matter of fact, I was very impressed. I emailed them back telling them how impressed I was, where it's, it's, it's a specific game plan on every specific thing happening on the golf course. With that being the case, where we go or where we are ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, twenty-five, thirty years from now, I don't know, but I can tell you my personal vision for it right now, and I've talked to the mayor about it, and he's, of course, also with the same type of vision, which is, we're gonna have golf there, we're gonna have possibly pools there, we're gonna have a restaurant there, we're gonna have a cigar bar there, there's gonna be a bar there, you know, et cetera, et cetera. There's gonna be, of course, a nice banquet center, center there. And, and to me, this is nothing but trying to stop future, and we're not talking about houses, we're talking about.
Restructuring use.
Construction and different uses that the city feels that are important to the residents, whether they are today, whether they are ten years from now. So, ten years from now, they may decide, and I'm just throwing it out, I'm just using a hypothetical, whatever it is that they want to put on that particular part of the golf course that is available. We have two hundred and fifty-three acres. It's not one or two or three acres. We have two hundred and fifty-three acres. So, whatever entertainment and recreational center that the city feels is needed, we will do. There's nobody talking about selling it. So, to me, trying to block it from being sold in twenty years or putting it out for the residents, to me, it's putting stuff out there that's just, it's not, at least it's not there. I've never had conversations about it. My vision for it is to have a fusion of, you know, with this particular golf course, things similar to the Dearborn Country Club, things similar to the Fairling Club, for those of you that have visited, with pools, gyms, you know, whatever things that the residents want. Let's not try to put something out there to give residents the illusion that something's being done or something is in the works or secret meetings as, as they are called, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm gonna vote personally no on this.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. You make good points. Any election that we put on the ballot is, takes time and there's a cost. On this issue, someone's gonna have to spend some money in educating the voters what exactly means either for or against. It's not, we put a, the city put a proposal to take the lives, change the charter, take the libraries out of the Recreation Department. The first time it was on the ballot, it failed because voters, I think in large part, thought we were creating another city department. As Counselor Chair and others have pointed out, you don't re, put restrictions on property that you own because it just reduces the value. There's no plans to, for the city to sell the golf course and for any developer to develop the golf course. And the city owns it, it would take a vote of the mayor and the, and the council, it would take, it would take the, the vote of the council and the mayor not vetoing any proposal before, and as Counselor Chair pointed out, the, the government that the people elect make any decisions regarding the golf course. I, we, we finally got a concession air contract in place. I think we need to proceed one step at a time. I think it's, it's quite a piece of property. Who knows? We had a ice arena in the city. The, then Lessee came to us and said, look, I, I, hockey is going out, I, I can't make any money doing this, and we changed the use of that, of the ice arena property. So, I, I, I think this is premature and I'm gonna vote no.
Yeah, and, and even something I'd, I'd like to add, so look, you know, you're speaking of an ice arena. So, let's say five, seven, eight years from now, the mayor, the council, whoever it is, says, you know, why don't we put in a, a nice ice rink, you know, close to, I don't know, Beach Daily and, and Warren Avenue, you know, that side of the golf course, you know, it's not used much hypothetically, I'm using hypothetical. If that's what we choose, we can't do it based on this. But let's say, let's say we lease it out, we, we decide subcontract it out to, I don't know, Joe Louis Ice Arena, I'm just throwing names out here right now, okay? And they're gonna run a nice ice rink and practice hockey or whatever the heck it is. I'm just saying, let's not handcuff ourselves to things that we don't know what's coming in the future as far as what we can or can't do to it. That's why you have a body of a city council to decide this in the future. And if this were something that you put out to the residents to vote on, then honestly, all of us should just resign. There's no sense to even have a city council or a mayor, because let's have everything go out to a vote to the residents, then we'll need a much bigger clerks' department to have them vote on everything. That's why personally I'm voting against this because I don't know what visions that there are for the development of this particular facility, for the betterment and for the use of the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Council Chair, if you guys are going to do this with this, like I said, put every city property on the ballot, you know, to vote, you can lease it, you can sell it, the City Hall, you know, everything, you know, Kent Field. So, if you guys are going to do something like this with this, do everything for that.
Well, I mean, as an example, you mentioned City Hall.
Council Chair.
We all know this City Hall's obviously older, and I know we've had conversations, you know, of, you don't know what comes up in the future. Like, let's say, for example, like Westland, for example, ended up using Circuit City and converted it into their City Hall. We don't know what's going to happen, so why not put a limit on this particular building where we can't sell it? Maybe one day it is, it does make sense for us to sell it and maybe build another one or move it or whatever. I just don't want to handcuff ourselves or put deed restrictions on ourselves on property that we personally own.
Council Chair.
Wait, let's, Councilman Wenzel first.
Thank you, Council Chair. I don't know what everybody's afraid of by approving this, that, you know, that the voters, we don't think that the voters are smart enough to make the right decision. The decision was made the other day to spend $2.5 million, I don't think hardly any of the voters would have approved of, and they're counting on us. I didn't vote on it, I voted no. They're counting on us to make the right decisions for them, and you're comparing the golf course to the senior centers, you're comparing a couple acres to 250 acres. This is a major, major investment, major piece of property for the, that the city owns, and you could always change, you could say, hey, we don't want to sell it, and then 10 years from now, hey, you know, city council wants to build a nice arena like Council Chair said, or whatever, you got to vote, say, hey, do you want to change it and put it up for sale for something? I mean, what's everyone afraid of? I mean, you're, this isn't going to cost us anything. All it's going to do is make sure that it doesn't get sold unless the voters, the residents, the taxpayers of Dearborn Heights say it's okay. Not just seven people, there are going to be completely different five years from now, none of us will be sitting up here 10 years from now. So, we're going to make a decision for eternity? Let the residents vote, let the residents have a say. Don't put gag on the residents.
Okay, so, I promised myself that I wouldn't answer you on some of your comments sometimes, and I let the first one go in the beginning of the meeting where you said you're the only one that goes to events and nobody else goes to events except the clerk, and I figured, you know what, I'll let it go, but I'm going to break my promise. When you make a statement such as, we believe the residents aren't smart enough, I'm sorry, maybe we could put it underwind, I don't recall saying that. I don't recall saying the residents aren't smart enough. The residents are smart enough to put people in elected office if they choose, and then they leave them to make decisions on their behalf. Do you know, did Joe Biden come up and say, hey, I'm going to make a proposal that if the White House ever sold, it's got to go to the voters? Did, you know, Detroit say if they're going to run, sell Joe Louis's arena, it's going to go to the voters? I mean, it just, that's why you put people in elected office to make decisions on your behalf, and the people and the residents have access to the elected officials. I never once said they're not smart enough, I will not say they're smart enough, they're not smart enough, and I don't think they're not smart enough, they're absolutely very bright people in the city. So, please, Councilmen, watch the words that you say, because I'm trying to hold back, this one I couldn't hold back anymore. Because you're making statements that I said that I did not say. Thank you. Councilman, they do next.
Thank you, Council Chair, and, you know, I know this is something, you know, Councilman Wenzel has been just very passionate for, and I do, I see your passion for it, Councilman, and I know you want to just see the best in overall, in making sure that the greenery stays and seeing what's best for the community, man, and I respect it, I really do. But I also can see where our Council Chair is coming in and putting deed restriction on yourself ultimately just isn't the best decision. But I can tell you something, if I'm up here or not in five years, I can promise you I'm always going to be in Dearborn Heights in five to 10 years, and I'm going to make sure that I'm an anchor for your voice to telling you that, one, I'll make sure that there's no homes being built on this, on that property, because I know that's something that I've stuck to my word at. And being 32 years old, I think at 42, if God willing, I'm still alive, I'm going to have the same, if, maybe it's 52, in 20 years, when the, you know, this lease agreement with the Isa Brothers is over. But I can tell you that I'm going to be a voice of anchor for you, and I'm going to make sure that my voice won't change on that. But putting a deed restriction on ourselves, I think is extremely hard, but I want you to know, I know you're very passionate, and, or just say, you know, we're not going to sell this property. Ultimately, what if the city goes into a situation where we're forced to sell it? You know, I don't want to put us in that position. And, you know, I believe right now we have 20 years before the city can look in any direction of wanting to sell this, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, to address a few points, one is, no, the city can end up selling it, but Isa Brothers would end up having a first right of refusal. So, it doesn't mean that the city is incapable of selling it based on the existing, or the agreement, which there are just a couple things before it can be executed. Two, this is not a deed restriction, just to clarify, this is not a deed restriction, it's not an easement.
This doesn't tell us that we can't go-
But it's, it doesn't say anything in terms of building or not building, the city could end up building different things on the property if it so chose to do so, or if it worked out something with Isa Brothers, assuming everything is going to go forward as expected, and, but we would just need to end up working that out. So, it's not like a conservation easement that we were talking about before, which I, you know, in my view, is not an appropriate approach. And then, final thing, just to clarify, Council Chair, you said, I think, 253 acres, it's actually 200, just under 223 acres, more or less.
Well, the county, of course, got 12.
No, it's actually-
I mean, the exact acreage is not the relevant, I'm just making a statement, we have a lot of acreage, okay, over 200, if it makes anybody feel better, we have over 200 acres, I just, you know, we keep putting all these blockages from good things happening on that golf course, and that's a gem for us, and I love the course-
This is not blocking anything, Council Chair.
Okay.
It's not blocking, Corporation Council, is this blocking anything, any kind of development or anything on the golf course?
This does not block development on the golf.
Nothing, that's right, it blocks nothing. And, and, Council-
But.
Okay. Corporation Council, now, if this doesn't pass, and so, you know, I guess they could do it now, but if this doesn't pass, the administration could have the authority to put the land up for sale anytime they choose?
Well, the administration wouldn't have the authority to end up selling the property, that would have to be approved by the city councils about it.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, they could recommend it, the administration could recommend it, it could, it could be put up potentially for sale at any time.
It could be offered for sale, provided this body voted to allow that to happen.
Right, 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 so, seven people can make a decision for 62,000. No, four people, that's all it takes, four people.
Council Chair.
Councilman Council.
And as we've discussed, there are other ways to accomplish sort of guaranteeing that there be no residential properties built-
That's not the case.
-on that land, the way it's zoned, you know, what the city will grant or not grant building permits for. But, and again, if this is on the ballot, it costs money to run the election, then it costs, someone's going to have to inform the voters either way, there's got to be a committee forum to say, well, this is what this means.
Okay, so, we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote. Motion on the table, I'm sorry, we are, and, so, motion made by Councilman Wenzel, supported by Councilman Muscat, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, this is to approve this, to make it clear. So, all in favor of approving the motion to have it go out-
Okay.
-to a vote with the residents? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay? Those opposed?
No.
No. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
I put my microphone on. Dave Abdullah?
No.
Mo Baydun?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
There you go.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Motion fails, two to four.
I'm sorry, motion defeated.
Motion failed.
I'm sorry?
Motion failed.
Feeded, okay, I couldn't hear what you said, okay. Okay, thank, motion defeated. Next up on the agenda is members of the public, but let's start with comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
First, I want to say, you know, and this is in no reflection to what Councilman Wenzel said at the beginning of the meeting. I had some thoughts and I made some inquiries. At the last council meeting, I said that Mr. Wenzel did not offer halal food at one of his golf outings, I was incorrect in saying so. And if anyone has any issues with Mr. Wenzel, please don't have it, direct those comments directly at me, because I was the one that made the mistake, okay? So, I sincerely apologize to Mr. Wenzel, his family, and I'll take, I hope I take the heat instead of him, that's my first thing I wanted to say.
I respect you for-
Okay, Mr. Wenzel, as, not only as a councilman, but as a man and a human being, I wish you would accept my dearest apologies, sir.
You don't need to apologize, but I'll accept.
No, but I, yes, I did, because I misspoke and I need to stand up for what I do and what I do wrong also, not just for some of the good things, if I've ever done anything good around here, but, but anyway, I'm watching the audience out there, and I'm watching people turning around and looking at Zoom on the screen there. I'd like to see either a screen there or a screen over here, so people don't have to turn around and look, I don't know if that's possible or not. I do believe we probably have some more PEG money available to do that, and there should be no questions, just to see the Zoom part, not that. Okay, put it on, however you do it, but they need to be able to see it clearly, they've got people in front of them there.
You know what, based on that, maybe keep that one agenda, convert that to Zoom, or vice versa.
However, but, but they need to have something to see the people on Zoom and do that. But anyway, the other thing is, is our lease agreement, and Corporation Council can correct me, it's really not for 20 years, it's for 10 years with two five-year options, which makes it 20 years, so, it's really not 20 years, I don't look at it at 20 years.
At the Isa Brothers' discretion.
Yeah, so, to me, it's 10 years and then two five-year extensions, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, it's not really 20 years, so, but anyway, I also want to bring up the fact that, you know, we still have a lot of blight in the city, and I blame that on the residents themselves, because the city doesn't cause the blight, the residents caused the blight, okay? And if we don't have, again, I'm going to say it again, if we don't have pride in where I live, you're going to get what you got, okay? But I do want to say another thing, that, you know, I know the residents what they want, they want their city services, they want their streets cleaned on a, you know, on a monthly basis or bi-monthly basis, they want their trash picked up, they want police enforcement, fire, they want their services, and at this point in time, and as a resident, I don't care where I get it from, I just want it, okay? And I mean, if I got to go out and pay to get it done, let's go out and pay to get it done, like, you know, Councilman Baydun said about the trees, getting the trees trimmed. The residents deserve to get what they pay for. And like I said, I don't care where I get it from, I want my city services, but, you know, so, but the other thing is, is, you know, I've also received emails from people and comments made to me that I'm not as boisterous as I used to be on certain situations, but I can guarantee, and you can ask the directors, I have called and I have emailed every two weeks on agenda items and asked questions, pertinent questions that need to be, to be answered, and they're answering them for me. So, I don't want to take up the time and do that, so, I just want to make sure everybody knows, I'm still doing my homework and reading my packets, and I send these emails usually out on a Sunday, so, it's been read before Monday or Tuesday.
And I vouch for that, because he bugs the heck out of me, so.
I want to not make a comment, and I'd like to ask the administration, specifically the mayor, Mr. Mayor, obviously, we approved as a body the golf course to the Isa Brothers, but I want to get from you an update, if you don't mind, if you could update us and the residents as far as what's going on, what's happened since then, I, we did receive from Revive a very detailed plan as far as what they plan on doing there, and again, I'll mention again, I was very impressed with the fact that within a day or two, that tells you, they didn't put it together a day or two, I think you had mentioned it at the last council meeting, that they were already prepared to start the moment we give the approval, and they did. And we got the email from them, from Jason, and again, I was very impressed with their plan, so, but if you could bring the residents up to date as far as what is the latest, I know I spoke with Mr. Ali Deep, as a matter of fact, I called him, and why didn't, go ahead, and I want to get an update from him on the estimate, and he was right at the golf course when I called him, so, that if either you or Mr. Deep can give us an update as far as what's transpired since last Tuesday, and what can we expect between now and the next 10, 15 days?
So, since Thursday, so you guys-
Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday.
So, Friday, actually, the Isa Brothers were, they had a few people at the golf cor, in the banquet, and there's, I believe there's one chef trying to bring in like a five-star restaurant to the banquet hall, I mean downstairs, so, they're already in the planning phase already, so, they can't, obviously, they can't touch anything in there till we sign the agreement. So, the agreement, we're still waiting on getting estimates. As you mentioned, Mr. Deep has been at the golf course for a few days since Friday, looking at the bathrooms, also the pumps, the panel, the cart path, so, they had a few people on the golf, at the golf course, walking it, trying to get us some estimates, so, we hope to have something by, within the next few days.
Good.
So, we're more eager to get this-
Mr. Deep, any update from you on the potential repairs, certificate of occupancy repairs? As a reminder for some of the residents, in the contract, we had it capped, in other words, the city certificate of occupancy repairs not to exceed $800,000.
On the golf side.
On the golf side, right.
Yep.
And so, Mr. Deep is going to give us an update on that?
As the mayor indicated mostly today and since the weekend was, I spent the weekend trying to gather up all the needed, first, we identified the items that needed to be included in the CFO repairs for the field. Two was lined up contractors, licensed specialists in those fields, so, we have the electrical, we found two additional electrical panels that supply the pumps and the condition of the pumps on the airfield, so, that's the submersible pump that provide the irrigation pond, which then supplies the irrigation to all the greens. As of this afternoon, the, so, we also have the cart path, that's been completed, so we got that. So, what we had left to do are the plumbing part and the electrical. And today, we had the electrical contractor, but before we can shut down the panel, the one that's leaning in the river, we want to make sure the pumps are actually working, so, you can't kill the power and then try the pump. So, this afternoon, as of late afternoon, the pump worked perfectly. That submersible pump is actually life and well, and it was winterized, so, at least that part is good. So, now, I move to, tomorrow, we're going to have the actual-
Irrigation.
Yeah, the irrigation pump and the panel that's leaking, so, we also have the supply to the pump, the submersible pump is also leaning in the river, so, we have two to consider. I worked with the, our billing department who issues the CFO to make sure that we covered all our bases for all the items included in the CFO, so, we get prices for all the items, so, there are no surprises later on, and he's been out there daily, Director Watland, so, we're on track.
What time is that going to happen, when they're going to be out there doing, you know, testing the irrigation?
So, the pump, we were there eight o'clock today, the experts, the pump experts came in, so, they started, basically, they spent most of the day on the submersible, the main pump that draws the river water into the pond, because, again, you can't draw from the pond-
Correct.
-because it's almost dry now, and I was surprised that we lost that much to evaporation. The pond is not full at all, so, you can't draw from it, you have to fill it first. So, the first step was to activate the pump, the submersible pump in the river to fill the pond, that worked out great, so, the pump is in good condition, at least that one is.
I just know, want to know what time they're going to do tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they're coming in tomorrow at nine.
Okay, thank you.
So, it might be a couple hours before we fire the pumps.
If you don't mind, I'd like to be there.
Please, everybody's there, it was the party today.
And I'm just going to, since you're up here, I'm just going to give just a little bit of a, at least a synopsis of what Revive Golf Management has put together as far as the next steps. This was a part of the email that they sent over to us, and I'm just going to give just the headlines. They're going to engage Brown Golf as expert agronom, agronomy team, next, they're going to complete the hiring of the local superintendent to report to Brown Golf Director of Agronomy, next, they're going to source out the equipment, and they have specific game plan on each one of these, but I'm just going to use the synopsis. Next is charging the irrigation system, the next phase after all that, this was the initial takeover, the next phase is phase two, that's the grow-in, they're going to start on that, and in that, they're going to sod the west greens, 2.75A, after that, they're going to work on the trees, tree work, that's hiring a tree service to take care of all the trees. Next phase is the mowing, the aerification practices, after that is the overseed, after that is chemical and fertilizer application. Phase three is maintenance, and this is, I think this is one I read, I just want to make sure, but where they talked about where they wanted like a, as great of a golf course as we could have in the city, and I'm just going to read there, just our last two sentences. The last phase is the maintenance, and that's maintenance efforts of the Warren Valley Golf Course throughout the 2023 season will be driven by improvement. It will take all of 2023 and into 2024 to get Warren Valley where it needs to be in time, the goal will be to provide playing conditions that exceed expectations while doing so in an efficient and fiscally responsible way. Efforts will continue to expand on a property's strength and invest in its weaknesses. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity at Warren Valley Golf Course, and he's available to answer any questions. So, I just want to point out to the residents that there's a game plan in place-
Yeah.
-and between the engineering, the administration, and-
So, we're-
Revive, they're all over it.
Absolutely, and we're working closely with them, so, the first half, what he said he was going to do has already been done, so, between Thursday and today, so, this morning, before we got to the pump experts, the greens were sampled and they had, they had specialists take cores of the greens to figure out, you know, the damage and the extent of damage or what can be done. So, quite a bit has already been done, the- So quite a bit has already been done. The plan is good, just hopefully, we get to the execution part. I just want to make sure that we get to the signing. So we're working on the estimates now, but the plan is in place, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Director. Is there anything you don't do in the city other than just doing windows? You do windows.
He does windows.
Mayor, have you seen him do windows?
Yeah. Let's ask his wife.
Okay, any other council members have any public comments? That, Councilman?
Good job on the election, City Clerk. We now have had our primary, and we know who our representatives are going to be, including some new congressional representation. Our congresspeople, we're going to, there are going to be some new congresspeople hold their feet to the fire. They make $174,000 per year plus benefits, and I'm sure we saw a lot of ads, a lot of people competing for those seats. Those who won, congratulations, but let's get to the job of giving our area good representation. These are volatile times. We've got a lot going on, a lot going on in the city. I'm glad we finally got a concessionaire in the golf course. We have to remember, we have to be statesmen, and we have to discuss the issues, not make things personal, not do any bullying. You know, there'll be a lot of issues, a lot of contention that'll come up in front of the council, and I just, I think we all need to keep that in mind, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from council members? Okay, so next up, we're going to go to announcements from administration.
Thank you, Council Chair. That was well put, Councilman Conston, what you mentioned, that was well said. Say, I also want to compliment the Clerk's office. I tell you, I was, I know the Chief of Staff called me around nine o'clock at night, eight thirty, nine o'clock. The power went out during Election Day, and so I came to the City Hall around nine o'clock, and I tell you, these guys commend the Clerk's office, they did an amazing job. And DPW, you know, they came in, they brought the generators. I tell you, there's, it was chaotic, but they handled it well. There was a lot of the a lot of people that worked the polls, they were here, and they were using their phones, you know, for flashlight, and like I said, it was very chaotic, but the Clerk handled it very, very well, and her staff, they were amazing. They never lost their composure. They were very professional. You know, they kept it straight. Even though we had few people come in, they thought it was a conspiracy, we were changing votes. You know, the Police Department did an amazing job. They actually showed up to the City Hall because they, there was thing that some residents came in, they wanted to march in the City Hall because they thought we were changing ballots. And so it was, like I said, you know, I commend the Clerk and her staff. They did really an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and staff. Any other comments from administration?
I might as well follow him up. He took half my thunder, but that's okay. Okay, thank you to the 150-plus precinct and absentee counting board and receiving board workers that made the August 2nd, 2022 primary election a success. As you may know, this election brought an unexpected challenge, but with the dedicated staff that we have here in Dearborn Heights, we overcame the obstacle with ease. At approximately 9:00, 9:30, well after the polls were closed, and thankfully, all of the absentee ballots were received and counted for in the qualified voter file, the City Hall lost power, the whole area lost power. That's when the fun began. Cell phone flashlights came on, phone calls started coming in to see if we needed help, and all the while, workers remained calm. At this time, I would like to thank the following individuals for their professionalism they always have demonstrated. In addition, with the exception of two, these members are full-time city employees who return to assist with the receiving board after completing their regular daily shifts. Under cell phone flashlights, the receiving board rocked it. Thank you to Beth Koval, Carrie McKinnon, Sarah Weakley, Sally Ramos, her son Carter Ramos, Lisa Hicks Clayton, Lisa McCaffrey, Nadia Nordine, and Tara Brush. Shout out to our Building and Maintenance Department supervisors, Chris DeShun, who, when I contacted him, immediately set up the generator. Mike Blackburn for texting me to make sure that we were all set. Thanks to Jeff Goody and Mark Wellentovich for getting all the equipment set up at City Hall and picking up the ballots at the AV counting board and returning them to City Hall. The Building and Maintenance Department were all-stars. It started the day before when they loaded all of the voting equipment, delivered it to all the 27 precincts as well as the counting board. And then the election happened, and then the next day on Wednesday, they're out there picking all the equipment up. I understand that there is a shortage of laborers, and the Highway Department employees pitched in as well. After phoning Mayor Bozzi, I'd like to thank him for his presence at City Hall, ensuring that we had everything we needed to continue without missing a beat. Councilman Baydoo and Dearborn's Chief of Staff Zainib Hussein contacted me as well to see where they could assist. And our new Director of Technology, thank you, thank you, thank you to Mr. David Cooper. He really helped immensely getting, making sure all the technology was taken care of. A big thank you to our Crestwood High School Honor Society for their assistance at the polls on Election Day, and we always appreciate our Police Department's availability to assist us wherever needed, even bringing me back to City Hall at 3:30 in the morning. Thank you to Crestwood School District, District Seven School District, Westwood, and Dearborn Public Schools, as well as St. Sabina for hosting our polling locations. Don't forget, I didn't forget you, Director McCaffrey. In addition, a special thank you to our Library Director McCaffrey for hosting the polling locations at Caroline Kennedy Library and for agreeing to the relocation of Precinct 20 to the John F. Kennedy Jr. Library, as well as his continued cooperation and assistance by allowing us the availability of the rooms at Caroline Kennedy for all of our election training and meetings and allowing the absentee counting board to use the library chairs. They love those. Thank you to our Parks and Recreation Director Lauren Sell for accommodating our polling locations at Berwin and Canfield, and a big shout out to Mike Keniger, our Recreation Coordinator at the Richard A. Young Center for always welcoming our absentee counting board. Last but not certainly not least, I am appreciative and extremely proud of the phenomenal office staff. Kathy, Dana, George, we couldn't do it without you. And the behind-the-scenes people that you do not see that really provide and get us to the point of Election Day. They are phenomenal. They're right here behind, and they're not here now, but that's where they send the majority of the time. You might see them running up and down the halls if you're here at City Hall. Alonda, Dennis, Marlene, Joanne, Art, and Karen and Diane, who run our absentee counting board. We also have our retiree, Jeannie North, who I brought back in, helping out on Election Day in the Clerk's office. Thank you for making the Dearborn Heights Clerk's office the best in the county and the state.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
I want to encourage our voters to get out there. Our pit crew is already kind of preparing, you know, for the November election. We had 17.76% turnout. I think we can do better. You know, so encourage your neighbors to get out there. Absentee counting board, we had more ballots go through the county board, no questions. Go ahead, Councilman.
All right, thank you so much.
No, 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 go ahead.
I want you to know that.
Go ahead, I'm waiting for my custard.
But I want you to know, so you met that one from Dearborn, he's the Commissioner, one of the election commissioners from Dearborn.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And he absolutely was talking about, you know, how hard you worked, just seeing the behind-the-scenes work that you put in, and he said, coming from Dearborn, wow, your clerk does much better in Dearborn Heights than, you know, and
We all do.
I'm telling you, this is somebody coming in from Dearborn saying, the Dearborn Heights Clerk really goes above and beyond, so I really wanted to just kind of recognize you on that and what Mokass was saying, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Council Chair, real quick, I'm sorry, for also Mr. Cooper, our IT Director. So as Len mentioned, I'm actually shocked that he actually stayed, he's still working with us. You know, much abuse we gave him that day. You know, we had, I mean, he was trying to get, there was so much stuff that was wrong that night, you know, with connectivity. And so I know most of us were here past 1:32 in the morning, and so, actually, I told him, you know, you can sleep in tomorrow, but obviously, the internet was down, so Mariana called him seven in the morning. It's like, no, you got to get back to work because the internet was down, so thanks to Mr. Cooper, you know, he really also stepped up, you know. So luckily, we have an IT Director that helped us, otherwise, we would have been in really big trouble.
And more specifically, we're not sharing IT with another city, so we have our own, which is great.
And yeah, he was here all night trying to make sure that we have a good connectivity.
Thank you.
Well, I think Madam Clerk just kind of summed up why we love our community so much. Really great, great people working together, really great job, everybody. Councilman, Council Chair Protem, excuse me, Muscat, this is directly for you. This was not part of what I planned to share with you tonight, but what I want to tell you is what you did tonight is very honorable, and I have a lot of respect for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you did. I also want to acknowledge Councilman Conston for what you said about being a statesman, about working together and being positive. Thank you. We all need that reminder, so I do appreciate that. I wanted to thank you for asking questions and calling the Treasury, and having questions asked is very important. We always want to be available to you, and we welcome your engagement as well as our residents, our constituents. You're very important to us. So we always want to be available to you and encourage you to reach out to us. This is going to be the last time I'm going to talk about this next thing until December. So, Summer 2022 taxes, the deadline, I know the deadline without penalty is Monday, August the 15th by 5:00 PM. If you want to avoid the late fees, make sure, you know, there's lots of ways to pay. You can go to the city website, the homepage, it's right there. Thank you, Chief of Staff, for getting that on there for us. Lots of ways to pay. I mean, we've talked about this before. You can call it in, you can use your phone app, you can pay in person, you can use a Dropbox, you can go online and pay. You can go to Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, Dearborn Heights Locations, and pay. Or you can pay at a kiosk, lots of ways. Just pay so you can avoid those late fees. And then the last thing I have is I want to thank the Treasurer's Office staff. The frontline has really been taking it, like we've had lines out the door. They're really, thank you to my frontline staff as well as the back office because they continue to show up, continue to do the work, and continue to serve with a smile, and we appreciate that they greet all of our residents with that energy and enthusiasm. And thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Cash my check, Treasurer. Cash my check.
Yes, it went to the bank.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a quick event coming up. Saturday, September 10th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, at Caroline Kennedy Library and John F. Kennedy Jr. Library, we will be having an open house. Coming out for a comedy magic show, drone demonstrations, giveaways, bounce houses, snacks, popcorn, and more. Should be a great time, so hope to see you there. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Who knew that mic had such an announcer's voice? You should make everybody's announcements.
I was calling the radio guy.
Hello to this body. My name is Latanya Gator. I'm here to represent the CCRC, Community and Cultural Relations Commission. I'm going to have three announcements to make, the first, I'll leave with positivity and gratitude first, and then the second, a little bit on the negative side, but I think it's important that this body knows that. So in June, the CCRC, with great help from city administration and community members all over, we planted a Pride Garden at City Hall to show support and inclusivity for the LGBTQIA community. It was really great, and again, I wanted to publicly thank everyone who was able to support that. Unfortunately, I believe it was youth, according to the video, it was vandalized in July, and that situation was brought to Dearborn Heights Police Department, and it was posted all over, so I wanted to thank the Police Department for making that announcement on their websites. I spoke with Detective Gondek and Chief Hart, and it is the will of the Commission that if those youths are brought to justice, that we wanted a voice in that matter, that we wanted it to be more of a restorative justice practice. We don't believe that youths deserve to have a criminal record over vandalizing the garden. We are advocating that they receive some education, some support. They can be held accountable for what they did and maybe do community service.
Make them rebuild.
Community service, yes. So just an update, that has not happened yet, but that is what we aspire to. This past Saturday, we replanted the garden again, and I wanted to shed some positivity to those who were able to support, donate, and help us build it. So thank you, Mayor Bozzi, for coming. Thank you, Councilman Brier. Thank you so much, Tom Wenzel and his family. Thank you so much, Clerk Lencinia. Thank you, Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton, Chastity Townsend, who was a Dearborn Heights community member. Our state rep, Erin Burns, came. Of course, me and Leslie were there from the CCRC, as well as other community members. Not Crochet, his name is Raiden Caden. He is a new resident to the Dearborn Heights community. He's also a member of the LGBTQIA community, so it was really good to have his support there. We had a community member by the name of Thomas Wesley and his wife Kendall, who are from AmeriCorps. So we really had some incredible people out there in 90-degree weather helping us replant this garden, and lo and behold, I got news a couple of hours ago that it was vandalized again. Yes. So.
Do we got cameras on it?
From my source, the camera footage was not working that day, according to the power outage. But again, I am here to shed positivity because love and hard work and good spirits overpowers any kind of ignorance, and so whatever we need to do to continue to promote that level of inclusivity, that is what the CCRC will do. My other announcement is that Heather Nicholson-Bester, who is a CCRC member, has resigned, so I wanted to publicly thank her for her service and her dedication on the Commission. Round of applause for her.
One of the best.
It also means that we have a vacancy on the CCRC. As some of you may know, we do not make our own appointments. Five appointments come from the mayor, two from city council, so with Heather resigning, that appointment lies with Mayor Bozzi. Our next meeting, now that we meet quarterly, is on September 1st at 7:00 PM at Richard A. Young. Please, 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 if you can make it, please, 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 if you are wanting to be on the right side of what we're doing with alleviating racism and discriminatory practices in our city. I constantly upload information on our Facebook page. It is Friends of the Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission. I just uploaded a ton of information from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Service, as to how to alleviate any type of racism at a system level, at an individual level. I ensure you that we all can do this work if we really try and do the work together. So thank you so much again for this administration and hope to see you on September 1st.
I'm sorry that has happened to all your hard work out there. Sorry. And no matter how someone feels, or how I feel, or anything like that is criminal. And it should never happen to anything at any point in time. I don't care what people's opinions or thinking are, it just should not, never happen. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody else?
You have two from the administration on Zoom.
No problem. So iPhone, is that administration?
I think it's Hassan Jamal.
Oh, okay.
So do you want me to go with?
Okay, so anybody else from administration here? Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, I've got a couple announcements. We have an August 25th South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting at 7:00 till 9:00 PM. Our featured speaker will be Chief Hart, and we will talk about what's happening with the Police Department and update everybody with that, and we also hope to have someone come and discuss fraud and the things that are happening where they're picking on seniors, maybe. where they're picking on seniors maybe in particular with all these scams that are going on. So we hope to address both of those items at that meeting. That's at 3335 South Beach Dale at 7:00 PM. We also have Ekor's Creek, it's the same location, August 24th at 6:00 PM. And then on September 3rd, the RHS reunion, which is Roosevelt High School, Robishell currently. They will be having a reunion at the Tyrone Wheatley Penn Park from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and everybody's welcome. We will have vendors there, and the groups will be serving their own variety of foods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else in administration here? Hearing none or seeing none? We'll go ahead and go to Zoom. We'll start with the ladies first. Our Recreation, yeah, no, ladies first. Our Recreation Director, Kimberly Laurentell, go ahead. And I do have a question for you before you're done, but go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to let everybody know or remind you about the picnic that we've got this Thursday for the seniors. For the council people who want to attend, we welcome you to attend, and also the other public officials. At the end, we appreciate that as well.
Kimberly? You got cut off after all the other elected officials.
Oh, okay. If you wish to bring a gift card for the raffle, we would appreciate that too as well. It starts at 10:00, and it should end about 2:00 PM. It's at the Canfield Community Center, and it's outside underneath the tent. So it should be an exciting, fun time for everybody. We have an illusionist this time, something different, so we're looking forward to it. And then Saturday, we have our garage sale at the Canfield Community Center. We have over 100 vendors, and it starts at 9:00 AM and goes until 4:00 PM. So hopefully, we'll see most of you there to come through and see what you can find to buy.
Okay. Kim, just a quick question for you. And I'm just throwing it out there, this is not a proposal, but just something to think about. I know that Dearborn just did their homecoming, and I know it was a great success. I'm just throwing it out there, just maybe for us to consider changing our Spirit Festival to possibly names such as Dearborn Heights Homecoming. I like the vibe of it much better, just something to consider, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if that was ever considered.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just so you know, the one thing that I'm looking to do for the next Spirit Festival is to reestablish the committee that we've had in the past, well, long time ago, community members and things like that.
Okay, great.
To get some different input, like what you had just brought up, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director, appreciate it. Next up, iPhone, is that Dearborn Heights Director? Yes, it is. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, on behalf of the city administration, and also on behalf of HUD. We appreciate your approval and the trust you put on us approving the action plan for the fiscal year 2023 from the CDBG Community Blog Grant. That's show the trust, the legislative put in the administration of the city to allocate and use the funding in a proper way. As an administrator for those federal funds, also, I thank you, on behalf of HUD, for doing the best you can approving the allocation of these funds. Given that in consideration, at CEDD, we are the administrators for the federal funds, HUD funds, and most of the mitigations of flood fund from FEMA. Any question regarding those funds? Our office is open. Our staff do their job and do it very well. We are proud of doing our job. We don't need no graduation, we don't need accept appreciation for doing what we're supposed to do. We represent the federal government and trying to reach out to the community using the fund allocated by the Congress. I assure you, and the mayor assure you, most of you know me, long and short, our staff, myself, and our consultants, and the people we are working with at the federal level and the state level. We have a partnership relation with them. If some of you call them, they will refer you back to me, and they will refer you back to my office. I assure you that will happen. That's a confidence that you should be proud of. The city should be proud of that. We need you lobbying as the public officials for the city of Dearborn Heights. We do the ads, encourage you. I encourage you, and I appreciate any one of you legislatively lobbying legislators to allocate and help us to get some funds. Do we need help? Absolutely, we need help. And you will hear from me about the help we need very soon. On the other hand, Share us how the ARPA fund is allocated. The ARPA fund allocated based on the HUD, CDDG, CPD, which is Community Planning and Development at HUD. It's a division of HUD. The formula they use to allocate, the CDDG funding used to allocate the ARPA funding. And that in particular, very short, it's based on the level of the, I'm not gonna say poverty, but I can say the low and moderate income census track in each city. So for the city who are, you know, above 51% low and moderate income, usually, most likely, they receive higher than the ones who are not. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the city of Dearborn Heights is at 50, believe it or not, 0.9. We are not 51% to be considered as a disadvantaged city yet, and I hope we'll never be. And I hope if we become, so we can receive more funding.
Okay.
With that, I really appreciate all your, what you do legislatively, and the most important, trust you put on us by approving, you know, the way we allocate it. And we do, and respond to Ms. Leslie. We do listen. When we put a public hearing out there, we put it to listen and to take it in consideration. We do that as part of our job, not to please anybody, but to do what's correct and what's right. And we do this year, went all the way above and beyond the box, outside the box, and did some community outreach for the most city of Dearborn Heights, which is Arabic. So that's why we focus on Arabic, not in Spanish or others, because the study and discussing with HUD, and encouragement by HUD, is to take in consideration, you know, if there is in another language, another culture.
Director, we gotta wrap it up.
Okay. I understand, but you let others congratulate each other and pat on their backs. I am here to.
You're doing a great job, there's no doubt about it.
I understand, but please, you know, when I am speaking for the public, treat me the way you treat others.
I do.
Because it's from me.
But we have to limit, we have to limit the time.
You know, what we do in the city of Dearborn Heights, in the community and economic development, with the advice of the mayor and coordination with the legislators, we don't do it because we want the credit. We do it because it's what we're supposed to do.
Right.
And you have a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Next up is Public Comments. You will have three minutes. Come on up, and state names, city, and street. I'm sorry, we, do we have, yeah, we're all set. Leslie? Yeah, she has an extra minute.
She has a minute, four minutes.
My name is Leslie Winless, and I live on Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. Tonight, I'd like to address my elected officials on the topic of anti-black and racist rhetoric. I made the conscious decision not to address anyone in particular because I don't want my message to be lost in the drama of who said what. Instead, I'd like us to reflect on how we can do better moving forward. It's extremely important to me that my elected officials understand the power of their words. I had an encounter recently with a Dearborn Heights employee that told me, "Sticks and stones to insinuate that words don't hurt." As adults, we should know better than this. If words didn't hurt, then there would be no outrage when people use racial slurs. If words have no impact, there would be no songs that make you cry or speakers that motivate you to do better. There would be no need for a political campaign, right? The Bible tells us reckless words pierce like swords, but the tongue of the wise brings healing. That's Proverbs 12:18, for those who want to fact-check. Your words do matter, because whether you like it or not, people look up to you, and they follow your lead. There would be no Hitler without people blindly going along with his message because they viewed him as a leader. Which brings me to another recent encounter, where an elected official told me that our city is diverse, that they themselves see no color, and truly believe the narrative of racism in Dearborn Heights is a political tool. Yeah, special, right? At first, I thought, don't rock the boat, just continue to educate folks and then remember. But then I remembered the words of my ancestor, Zora Neale Hurston. "If you are silent about your pain, they'll kill you and say you enjoyed it." So here I am today, speaking in her honor. You must not just be coloredblind, but you have to be seen out to miss the number of Confederate flags flying around this city. I've never seen so many people so proud of losing in my life. I'm guessing you also missed the multiple attacks on the Pride Garden on your way in every single council meeting. Your eyes must be glued shut to miss the countless, very public anti-black comments by one of your fellow councilmates, like the person who killed Renisha McBride, she's never been charged. Or when an African-American athlete is fighting for the profit off their own name, they should be able to afford college if they can afford tattoos. Intentionally or not, this person is cosigning the future slaughter of unarmed black teams who knock on a door for help and invalidating the concerns of athletes who kill themselves for their crafts for little to nothing in return. Your cataracts must be really acting up if you missed the memo that in February of 2013, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights went after the last 35 organizations in Michigan that are still holding on to offensive names and mascots that negatively impact American Indians. Meanwhile, here in Dearborn Heights, we are proud to have the last team in Michigan still named after the artwork. We have the loudest community bragging about their heritage, their history under this name. Newsflash, it is not your heritage, it is not your history, it is not your name to defend, it's not your name to be proud of, it's not your name to have. This body still approves funds for this team using tax dollars annually against legal presidents that advises you not to do that. Would you be so silent if that racial slur was yours? One that impacted your culture, your heritage, your race? That's a rhetorical question, though, since I know you wouldn't be silenced. After all, I watched the meeting last Thursday. This isn't a narrative, this is our livelihood. Angel Winless could one day be Renisha McBride, Collins Winless Jr. could one day be Andrell Anthony. You need to do better and be better. If for nothing else, it's because my babies are watching, and they get to inherit the city you're building.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Okay. Appreciate that. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, is?
One second. City, and then lastly, I always ask whoever works at the city if you're representing the city or on your, as a resident.
Dearborn Heights, just as a resident.
Okay.
Is there any update on Anthony Camilleri's destruction of property at the golf course in the investigation?
I can't personally comment on that. I'll leave it to somebody from, I'll leave it to the chief, if he's still on, to comment on that, if that's what he's.
Council Chair?
Yes.
That really should not end up being addressed publicly when we've identified someone by name. Two, it could end up having a negative impact on a pending investigation.
Well, again, I was gonna leave it to the chief to comment where he wants to comment, but, well, we can't comment on that, obviously.
There's nothing, is the investigation still ongoing?
I can't touch it, we can't comment on that, so.
Yeah, if the chief believes that he can make a response, that would be not potentially prejudicial.
He is still on.
But frankly, I don't know how much he can say that would not particularly sense an individual is identified by name.
Okay. Chief, before you begin, if you do plan on saying something, did you hear what the Corporation Counselor recommended?
I did, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm not gonna comment on it this evening. I appreciate the question, but it's not something that I feel is appropriate to do right now.
Okay. Okay, and one other thing, I want to correct the city clerk. The election went off great, but what she will never do is congratulate herself because if it wasn't for a smart, competent, honest clerk, everybody below her could not do her job, could not do their job. So I want to give congratulations to the city clerk for.
And I'd also like to correct, she said she was the best in Michigan, I think the best in the United States. Anybody else?
She said their offices, not her.
Well, she represents the whole team.
She does, she's the best, in my opinion. And she's a Michigan State fan.
Don't pull.
Sorry for her loss.
Ghost parties.
Sorry for your loss.
The FFF Championship Series.
Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. Glad all the, most of this golf course stuff is behind us, but there's one thing that I brought up in the past. Can you hear me?
You gotta talk a little louder, but go ahead.
All right, I'm doing my best. One thing I had brought up in the past, and this was regarding the fire department, fire and rescue, I noticed Dearborn had their miniature fire truck here during the Spirit Festival. And I had brought up that that would be a good idea to have one of those for this golf course, since running a rescue squad out there would most likely get stuck in the event of rain or anything like that. But I would like to see something in the budget or in this deal that you're working with as part of the equipment as for an emergency vehicle to be allocated towards that golf course, no matter what size you make it. I know the chief said in the past that they've never had any problems before, but you cannot predict the future. So if we could do something in that line, I'd rather pay for a fire truck or a fire rescue equipment out there rather than pay for somebody's life.
Good idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, sir.
Hey, it's Red. Red, Red.
Bob Davis, better known as Red, Dearborn Heights, live on Lock Loman. Just two things that happened in the neighborhood. One was, my neighbor was having construction work done in her house, and the contractor parked his big trailer in the driveway. Well, someone came and stole it. But with the help of the neighbors and the Dearborn Heights Police Department, we recovered the trailer over on Gully and Cherry Hill. The trailer itself cost about $15,000. It's Carlos Construction, and he appreciated all the help we got. And I appreciate the Dearborn Heights Police, and I commend them for the excellent job that they did. And they got his trailer back, and the guy came, you know, sold this guy the trailer for three grand and said he'd be right back with the registration. Well, if you're selling a trailer, you're gonna have the registration with you, right?
Right.
So the guy knew it was hot, but he got caught, and he's out 3,000 bucks. Do I have sympathy? No. My last thing is priority garbage pickup. There's only 18 houses on my street. Every time they're leaving, majority of the, not majority of the time, but like today, while I'm bringing it up, I happen to be sitting on the back of my tailgate of my pickup, and they came, picked up garbage, and I look, and they put the garbage in. It went all on the street. Guy got out and went like this. Guy got out and went like this, got back in the truck, took off. So I just said, and I waved him down, says, hey, he says, I'll be back. I says, all right. You know, they got rakes, shovels on their trucks to put it in. And I just don't think Priority's doing a very good job, because I cruise the neighborhoods, I'm retired, and I see that around where there's a lot of garbage and they don't pick it up when it falls out. Sometimes that's a responsibility also, the homeowner not properly putting their garbage in their containers. They just throw it in there loosely. So if you have a windy day, of course, it's going to blow around. So it's a responsibility. And that's it.
Okay.
And I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
All right. First of all, kudos to our police department, so good job.
Yeah, excellent job.
And they also did a good job on, I know on an incident that happened on Evangeline about a week or so back, so good job to them. As far as Priority's concerned, write down your name and number, and I'll have a gentleman contact you from Priority and make sure it gets taken care of, whatever your issues are.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that.
Or email it to me if you want.
Yeah, or we can look for another, someone else to come up.
I think overall, if we base it on our last two, three, four weeks, I think they've drastically improved their customer service.
I'm not saying they're bad all the time, but I'm just saying when a guy gets out and looks.
No, no, I agree.
Come on.
Yeah, but I think it's a secluded incident, and like I said, I'll make sure the gentleman contacts you from Priority and looks into that. They've got cameras on their trucks, so they'll know who did it.
Oh, I believe you, but I've also called Priority too, when I've seen that happen. So I get on the phone and call them directly, and when it happened once before, and my neighbor was.
We'll take care of that for you.
They came and took care of it personally.
No problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience?
Love you, Red.
Counselor Chair?
David.
Before Red leaves.
Red.
Red.
Down here.
Okay.
Closer to the door. Yeah, if this happens again, just call our office, we'll make sure a manager sends the driver back, and we've been very successful. If you call us the same day.
Yeah.
You know, make sure the driver gets back, you know, they don't take care of it at the minute. So they will, they will. The manager is really on it.
Well, anything I ever see, I get ahold of you guys quick enough, and I know the right people to call, and I make the right calls to do it. And if, you know, I thought the guy was going to come back and clean it up, he didn't. Well, you know, I understand that, you know, he didn't want to.
Yeah. I think, Red, I need you to work on getting out of your comfort zone and saying how you truly feel about things, okay? Because it seems like you're a little uptight about saying how you feel about it.
I'm an ex-CEO of Red.
Oh, here we go.
I know exactly what to say and what not.
That's right. That's right.
And he doesn't need a microphone either.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. The only one that the microphone works perfect on. Anybody else in the audience that would like to come up to speak?
David, I have a couple more comments.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
All right, I'd like to thank Mike McCaffrey for his presentation last month on the Little Red Schoolhouse in the Nolan Cemetery. He did a great job. And then at our South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting, Mr. Ali Deeb, and he brought Martin from Wade Trim, they had a fantastic presentation. We had it up on screen, what the drone saw when it went down Ecorse Creek. And we've located over 100 spots, and it was a really great meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else in the audience? Going once, going twice, going three times? Somebody's got to say it, I can't say it. Moving to adjourn? Okay, move to adjourn by Councilman Bedun.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.